Just in a prayer this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. Father, Mother God, as we go through our meeting agenda this evening, please let us remember that we serve at the pleasure of our public, our constituents. Please bless our great city and all of us as we move forward tonight. Thank you, amen.
Thank you, our Councilmember Toy. Good evening. Welcome to the 1,904th regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, September 21st, 2020. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Toy?
Yes.
Vice President Barr?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Present.
Councilmember Jolly? President McIntyre?
President, we have all members of the council with us this evening. And we have the presentations of the minutes.
So move, Madam Chair.
Support. All right. These are the, these are the minutes from the 1,903rd regular meeting of the city council that was held on August. I don't have the date in front of me. Seems like it was one. I'll, I'll get that in a second. Anyway, the minutes, if we could, you offered approval?
Yes, I did.
And support from?
White.
White. And Madam Clerk, would you please take the, take the vote on approval of the minute, please?
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly? President McIntyre? Councilmember Jolly, we're not able to hear you. I don't know if you're on mute or not.
I thought he had laryngitis.
All right. Just to clarify, one, one moment, Councilmember Toy, just to clarify, those were the minutes from the 1,903rd regular meeting of the city council, and that was held on August 17th, 2020. It was a long, seems like it was a long time ago.
That's what I was going to share with you, Madam Chair.
Yeah. What's that? The date?
The date, yeah.
At this time, we go to the council. If anyone has any personal announcements, tributes, or recognition they'd like to make.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Jolly?
I would like to take this opportunity to wish my wife a happy birthday and a happy anniversary. It's a twofer. I tried to convince her that I should only buy her one present, but she was not satisfied with that. So I'll wish her a happy birthday, and then when the moment is appropriate, I'd also like to offer a motion in regards to Greenmead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you also have a list of retirees for this evening, Jolly?
I do, if you let me get that as well, if you want to move on to somebody else, and then I'll pull that up.
Okay, Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. I got a couple of quick announcements. One, I want to give a shout out to all the teachers and the students that started back to the virtual world, trekking through and trailblazing. It's, it's definitely different times, but we applaud you, we're there for you. I know, council, we did our fun pictures to show our support, so that was kind of fun. Also, as many of you can see, I did do the head shave. This was to benefit children cancer research through St. Baldry's. It's a great charity, especially local, Robbers Wiki and Matt Kalnacki. They, to date, over the last 10 years, have raised over $800,000. And they're looking at potentially, you know, going hitting the million mark this next year. So it's a great thing to do. The hair will grow back, but I was happy to raise over, I think we raised close to 1,500 bucks, which is, you know, minuscule compared to some of the stuff that these gentlemen do. So big kudos to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough, and congratulations to everyone who participated and made that a success, including you, Mr. McCullough. I think if we were to take a vote, that people probably prefer the mullet, but we know that this was done for a good cause, so I think we're willing to, to, uh, let's go with the mull in favor of this one. All right.
Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize for not being ready there. I was having some difficulties in switching computers here. So on behalf of the city council and the retirement board, I'd like to wish a happy retirement to Karen Worley, who has served 30 years with the city of Livonia as a programming supervisor in the engineering department, and Susan Bastian, also a program supervisor in community resources, who has served 32 years. It's true dedication, 30-plus years. It's, it's longer than I was, I was almost going to say longer than some of us have been alive, but it might be close. But we thank them for their dedication and their service to the city, and we know it's a better place because of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Does anyone else from the council have anything? Councilmember Donavick?
Thank you, Madam President. As many of you remember earlier in the year, before the summertime, we worked on a project to create some banners to highlight the class of 2020. And thankfully, Dan McGyver was very generous and bought all of the signs. And we had 32 of these banners across the Five Mile Farming area, thanks to DPW who put those up. Well, a few weeks ago, Bill Joyner and Friday Musings came up with the idea of selling these signs that were taken down just a few weeks ago, before the new school year started, and raising money for Friends of Greenmead, Clarenceville Education Foundation, and Livonia Kids and Families. To date, I think there's only about 15 or so signs left, banners left. So we're raising some good money right there to give back to these three charitable organizations in our community. So if anybody would like to make a donation and have one of these great graduatory class 2020 signs highlighting our four high schools, please reach out to me. And again, thank you to Dan and his family for being so generous this year and making that happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Donavick. Anyone else have anything? Council, Vice President Barr?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to wish my youngest son a happy birthday. He turned 10, so we're officially out of the single digits in the Barr household. We had a fun time on Sunday, and Trey, we love you very much.
Happy birthday, Trey.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Jolly?
So at this time, I'd like to offer a motion to put into the Strategic Planning Committee the topic of a Greenmead master plan. We've had some recent changes in the structure of our administration with some new eyes and some new hands coming into control of Greenmead. So I think it's appropriate at this time that we study and ultimately develop a master plan as to what we will be doing with that property. I would like a second, please. Thank you.
Support. I'm not sure, was that Barr?
I think so. Yeah.
All right, support from Barr. All right, any comments?
Nothing further from me, Madam President.
All right, so this is a, a request from Mr. Jolly that we put the issue of a master plan for Greenmead in the Strategic Planning Committee. Is that correct? Did I get that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, if there are no comments, Madam Clerk, if you would go ahead, please, and take a vote on Mr. Jolly's, on the resolution he's offered.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the resolution passes. And so, Mr. Jolly, I believe you're the chair of that committee?
I am, Madam President. I will look to schedule a meeting to discuss that topic in the relative near future, probably in the next two or three weeks. Thank you.
Excellent, and I have, I have several announcements that I need to, that I need to make this evening. We have two, we have two public hearings that will be held on September 28th, 2020. These will be via Zoom. The first is petition 2020-07-01-03, and this will be for the rezoning of the former Webster Elementary School. And number two is petition 2020-07-06-01. And this is a language change for medical marijuana facility locations. And, and again, I just want to be clear, this is a language change. It's not anything initiated by the city to change our policy. This is to bring us into alignment with, I believe, with state requirements. And we have another public hearing that will be held. This will be for the annual budget. This will be held on October 7th, 2020 via Zoom. We have one X item that we will go to at the end of the meeting. And finally, we have new, we have new data on item number eight and items number X1. And I want to get to those items, I will refer to the, I will refer specifically to the new data we have. This time, Councilmember Toy?
If I may ask you, what date did you give for the finance of budget meeting?
October 7th.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And at this time, I'm going to introduce our department heads. I can see that we have our city clerk with us, she's always with us. Our city attorney, Mr. Paul Burnier. Our Director of Economic Development and Planning, Mr. Mark Terramina. I see we have Mr. Zalinsik, the, our outstanding city engineer with us. I know that we have Casey O'Neil, our outstanding Director of Information Technology Services. And I don't know if we have any department heads in the audience. I see Mr. Varga, the Director of Administrative Affairs. We have Mr. Doug Moore with us, who I assume is representing DPW, and Jacob Rushla, also who I assume is representing DPW. We have Linda Shield, our outstanding city treasurer with us. And let me see. We have our recent retiree and former legislative director, Judy Freebie, with us. And we have Sarah Kasperowitz, who will be taking over as the head administrator in the council office. And those things are in work. So those are the department heads. At this, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Toy?
If I may, I'd like to introduce somebody special this evening to the council. As some of you may know, I, I served on the University of Michigan Alumni Board for interns. And it's a very important internships that the university offers to students of various, various areas of concentration. One of those students I'm happy to announce, and I had several calls, is interning with me for this semester, and her name is Madison Day. And Madison will be doing a little bit of policy work and palling around. Ironically, what she'd like to do is be a U.S. Marshal and maybe start off as a police officer. So we're very happy to welcome Madison from one of the finest universities on earth, the University of Michigan. And I'm happy to have her with me this semester. Thank you, council members.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Madison. I had the pleasure, I believe, of meeting Madison a week or so ago, and nice to have you participating via your internship with Councilmember Toy. I know that she does a lot of work in Lansing, too, so I hope you enjoy that experience. I'm sure you will. At this time, I've already made my announcements. I don't have any other announcements to make, but we will ask, as we go into audience communication, if our parliamentarian, Council, uh, city council member Kathy White would please read the rules for the audience communication.
Certainly, thank you, Madam President. So, "Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name and, if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present, and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council regular and study meetings where citizens may address the council. There will be audience communication also at the end of all regular and study council meetings where, again, citizens may address the council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. And citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter in writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communication portion of the agenda is limited to a total of three minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council president. And again, if anybody wishes to expand upon their remarks, they can reduce them in writing and submit them to the city clerk. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting." So thank you, Madam President.
Kathleen, you're on mute.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. We set aside 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for the audience communication session. Anyone who does not have an opportunity to speak during those first 30 minutes may remain on the meeting and will have an opportunity to speak at a subsequent audience communication session at the end of the meeting. If you are not using your real name in your, in the name that appears on my screen, you will be asked to give your name in order to speak. That's one of the things that we ask, that we require people who wish to address us to do. You may give your address if you want to. You don't have to do that, but we do ask you to identify yourself by name. Or, yes, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, I just wondered if I could have a minute to talk about the election really quick before we go on.
Oh, yes. Yes, and this will not, we will not count this into the 30 minutes.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone, the election is eight weeks from yesterday, so November 3rd. The first round of absentee ballots are going out in two weeks. We have approximately over 30,000 ballots going out, could possibly be 40,000 two weeks from right now. We are working very hard in the office right now to get everything ready. So people that are wondering why they don't have a ballot yet, because we're getting that phone call, it's, we don't have them yet. We don't even have them yet to send out to people. We will be receiving them late this week, early next week. So the ballots go out in two weeks. We are in need of workers. If anyone is interested in working, working, please contact the clerk's office. We're also looking this year to have what's called, what I'm calling, safety captains. People that will work inside the buildings to help with wiping down pens, wiping down stations, reminding people, workers, take temperatures of the workers, reminding the workers to wear a mask. A voter does not have to wear a mask if they choose not to, but we can offer them one. And so we will offer a mask, but we cannot require a mask of a voter. And we'll also be asking people to keep the six-foot distance. Again, the first round of absentee ballots is going out in two weeks, and then they will continue to go out after that, as we have probably every two days. For the month of October, the clerk's office will be open until 7 o'clock on Tuesdays and Thursdays to help residents that have, are working during the day, so they can come in and take care of election-only businesses. So for the month of October, the clerk's office will be, have additional hours from 5:00 to 7:00 on Tuesdays and Thursdays to help our residents. When you get your ballot, if you have an absentee ballot, if you wish, you can drop it off at the drop box outside City Hall, or you can walk it in. We have a drop box inside City Hall. And I think that about covers that right now, but I know there's a lot in the news right now about tracking ballots. And the main thing is, there's, we have not mailed any ballots yet. So people that are tracking their ballot and are concerned that they don't have one, it's because we haven't sent one yet. So please give us about two weeks for that. If you have requested a ballot and you do not have one by the first week in October, please contact our office, and we will make arrangements to get you one. And with that, thank you very much for giving me a moment.
Thank you very much, Clerk Nash. We appreciate that and appreciate the work that you and your outstanding staff are, are doing. And it's never really stopped since the primary. There's, there's no law. And we appreciate all that, and we know that everyone in our city is absolutely committed to the integrity of the voting process, and everyone having the right and the opportunity to vote is qualified to do so. All right, at this, yes, Councilmember Toy?
Thank you very much for the recognition. I don't know if Linda Shield's on or not, but I just paid the tax bill today, and I want to remind residents that taxes are due. And so, you know, you might want to get those into the red box or to the, can they come inside to pay those, Suzy?
Yes. Yes. City Hall is open.
Okay, City Hall's open for business, especially.
My understanding, Councilmember Toy, and please track me if I'm not, if I misspeak, Clerk Nash, you may come in. There's an entrance, you have to have a mask on, you have your temperature taken, and then be cleared to proceed to do your business if it's on the first floor. If you have business beyond the first floor, you'll need to have an appointment and have someone escort you up to the office. Is that correct?
Yes, that is exactly correct. When you come in, you're coming in the center doors by the fountain. They are taking temperatures and issuing masks if someone doesn't have one. And you can come right to the clerk's office or the treasurer's office if that's the business that you need to attend to, like pay your water bill, request a ballot, pay your taxes. If you have business elsewhere in the building, you need to have an appointment, and someone will come down and take care of you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Donavick, did you have a comment?
A moment ago, Treasurer Shield had her hand raised in the attendee box, but it looks like she took it down, so I'm not sure. I'm assuming Clerk Nash and you answered the question, maybe she was going to talk about.
Let's see. I do not see that, I do not see that, that the clerk has her hand up any longer. If, if anyone can see differently, please let me know, but I do not see the clerk, the clerk's hand up, or the treasurer's hand up. Thank you. All right, at this time, we will now move to audience communication at 7:23. At 7:53, we will end the first session of audience communication and move on with the rest of the agenda. And then if there are still people who wish to speak who do not have the opportunity to do so during the first, during the first session, then we will go back to those people and with additional audience communication at the end. So I will begin with the first hand I saw up, and that is Nancy. And I'll remind everyone, you have three minutes to talk. Let's see. Nancy, good evening. Good evening, Nancy. Nancy, we can't hear you. All right. Appears that Nancy was not able to, to join us, so perhaps she can come back in afterwards. All right, next, we will go to Taylor Pennington. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor Pennington, and I am a member of the Survivor Speaks organization. I would like to address the council in regards to Livonia not yet deeming racism as a public healthcare crisis. We all know that racism affects all people, whether it's physically, mentally, or emotionally. It is a direct or an indirect impact. Even the mayor of Michigan has acknowledged the effects that racism has on all people and has deemed it a public healthcare crisis. So I just want to go over the four criteria that the CDC has acknowledged what it takes for something to be a threat to public health. One, it has to be a burden to society, and I believe we all can agree that racism is indeed a burden on our society. Two, it is, it affects a disproportionate rate of a particular section of the population, i.e., people of African-American descent. Three, it shows that the current measures aren't enough. I think we can all agree that what has happened so far isn't enough, especially with the more recent awareness of what's been taking place across America. And four, an upstream change will need to be necessary. In other words, the institutional problem of racism. So the only way that we can begin to eliminate the disease of racism is to first effectively, definitively, and publicly announce that it is indeed a public healthcare crisis. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Next, and, and also, I, I'm not sure if Councilmember White said this. She'll let people know when they have 30 seconds left, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Next, we will move to Mark H. Yes, Mark H. Good evening, Mark H. And if you could give us your name, please?
Good evening. Yes, my name is Mark Hallis. I live at 33468 Rayburg. I wanted to address the situation with the protests that have been happening at the Planned Parenthood right down the street from my house. There's three main key issues that we're having, and I want to address this first in saying that we support everybody's right to protest. But it's been creating other issues within the neighborhood that have been a bit dangerous and excessive for everybody that live here. The first thing I want to address is the excessive noise. The honking, the loud preaching, it happens all day long, and with more people staying home with, you know, online Zoom meetings as well as online classrooms, it makes it very difficult for children and others to pay attention with the honk, the honking and the yelling all day long. There's also the other issue with cars parked so close to the road and the signs that are blocking the view coming in and out of the street. It's been very difficult to actually see oncoming traffic. I think it's going to create even more situations where we can see accidents piling up in this area. We've had a couple of neighbors that have already been involved in accidents. They're here on the meeting today. It's not just put to the protesters, it's also the anti-protesters that have been involved in these type of situations where it's, it's just creating a bigger, bigger mess. You know, with these signs and large canopies that are going up in tons, it makes it more and more difficult to move in and out with that type of traffic. Lastly, extremely graphic signs have moved towards the neighborhood. I have a seven-year-old son, and when asked to kind of remove the signs from, you know, the direct site of the neighbors where there are children present.
30 seconds left.
We've been yelled at. We've been yelled at and screamed at, and they've directed more and more of that type of, you know, those graphic signs towards us. We just wanted to be able to address those situations, and hopefully we can come to some type of conclusion to fix the situation. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Hallis, for your comments. And it's my understanding, I, I know the administration is aware of this, the council's aware of it. I've gotten some emails, and I apologize if I haven't had an opportunity to respond to everyone who sent me an email on this. We are aware of the issue. We really understand and can empathize with the unpleasantness that you're dealing with right now. And we are headed to figure out ways to address this. I believe as a first step, the Traffic Commission is taking up the issue tomorrow evening of the parking on the street. So that's a first step, and thank you for your time and for your comments. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you.
You need to unmute yourself, please. Councilmember Toy, you need to unmute yourself. Council, there we go.
I got it, I got it. Okay, the host had me on mute, I think it was. That's what it said to me anyhow. Madam Chair, I would, you know, people have the right to protest, we know that. We, we've had a lot of protests in our city. We've had a lot of protests in our city. I know this is ongoing, but I'd like to also, I mean, had there been police reports on this or what? I hear what the gentleman is saying, and I appreciate that. I live on Rayburn myself. It seems to be a very popular street for different kinds of venues and things, as of late. But I really am concerned, as, you know, the neighbors or this gentleman is suggesting that there are these ongoing things, because I've heard that the police have been over there, and they find no cause. I've talked to several of our police officers, so maybe we need to ask about this more in depth than, you know what I mean? Not only in council, but maybe, you know, our mayor's administration or whatever, you know, you deem, Madam President. But I, as one council member, have concern both for the residents and for the protesters. I mean, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of a tight one there. You know, it is America. You know, it's a very serious issue on both sides, and so we want to be fair to our residents that are there as well as protesters that are trying to express themselves in, hopefully, a polite manner, which sounds like there's a few questions on there. I appreciate it so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I would, first, I'll state that not getting into anybody's opinion, people do have the right to protest, but I believe that there are certain time, place, and manner restrictions that are afforded municipalities to kind of control out-of-control protests and anti-protests and this sort of thing. But I am no expert in the First Amendment. I would make a request at this time that we, as a council, request a report and recommendation from the Law Department in regards to what kind of time, place, and manner restrictions the city can be protesting of any kind. This is an example that's been brought to our attention. There are other protests and anti-protests and all kinds of things. And oftentimes, keep people, keep people safe and healthy and really to ensure that people do have the right to protest, there are oftentimes things that we can do. So I'd refer that to the Department of Law, just so we can get some information in regards to what, if any, policies or restrictions or procedures we have on record in the city, and maybe to look at what other cities have done in this regards as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jolly. And I believe the way we usually go about that is we refer to the administration, and then it gets referred to law, but I'm...
I'm okay. I'm amenable to that. Thank you.
We would like to know what the legal, the legal situation or legal standing and our ordinances are, so thank you. All right, we will then continue. Let me flip back to the attendees. We will go to Hillary Smith. Good evening.
Good evening. Can we hear me all right?
You sure can.
Thank you. So I've been working with Livonia citizens caring about Black lives for the last three months, and I've done a lot of research about what cities and police departments are doing around the state and around the country. I'd like to start with the state of Michigan's police, I'm sorry, Michigan State Police. Colonel Joe Gasper said, "If we find we can improve upon our practices to ensure fair and equitable treatment for all people, you have my commitment that we will make these necessary changes." They have already enacted their own website, much like Livonia's PAC. And then we also have cities like Kalamazoo and Grand Rapids that have brought in outside analysts, specifically the Lambeth Group, to help gather the traffic stop data and analyze it to show where their police departments can improve in non-biased policing of the city. These cities took the independent analysis that showed bias and made concrete plans on how to improve. In Grand Rapids, this included the city council and the city manager. And the Michigan State Police actually implemented a ten-citizen oversight committee that is staffed by volunteers to assist with this research and the implementing of best practices. In a previous interview just recently, Chief Cade stated that, "My overview is elected leadership in the city of Livonia. They're in their seats in office to serve the constituents." So previously, all of you have said that you have no oversight, no control with the police department, yet right here, Chief Cade said that our elected officials, meaning you guys and the mayor, are who he answers to. So I'd like clarification on, you know, these conflicting things that have been stated now and are even published through Hometown Life. So, you know, I'd hope to see that we can move forward on these sorts of initiatives like the state of Michigan and Kalamazoo and Grand Rapids.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Madam President.
Yes, Council Vice President Barr.
I can take that one as far as clarifying the, what you call the apparent contradiction, and I can, I can see how that maybe can be confusing. The mayor is the one who has direct authority over the police department. She's the one who has hiring authority over the police chief. He reports to her. It's her office that negotiates police contracts. The police department is part of the administration, which she is the executive branch's head of. The extent to which council has control, I don't know if "control" is the right word, but influence, I guess, really is limited to budget. You know, council, just like Congress at the United States level, at the city level, council approves the budget. We control the purse. And so in that sense, you're right. I mean, we have some influence with the police department, but as far as when it comes to direct authority for hiring, when it comes to direct authority for contracts, and, oh, I should say that too, and council approves contracts after the mayor negotiates them. But, but, yeah, the mayor handles hiring and, what was the other thing I was going to say?
Operation.
Policies. That's the other thing I was going to say. Sorry, I was drawing a blank. So that's, that's the, that's the division of duties between the executive and legislative.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, we will move on to Nancy. Good evening, Nancy. Could you please give us your name?
On mute. Hi, my name is Jahad, and I'm from Northville, Michigan.
Oh, this is, all right.
Anyways, I would like to talk about my experiences.
I'm sorry, I couldn't... Could you give us your name again, please?
Jahad M.
What's your last name, please?
I'm comfortable with M.
All right, yes, go ahead.
I am a former Livonia student. I attended LCTC, Livonia Career Technical Center. Basically, I wanted to come here and address a few issues that I've experienced, being a former Livonia student and also being a former Livonia resident. I am a man of color, and I have sadly have to say that I have experienced police brutality myself. I was at school and a policeman was there, and when I walked out, he followed me all the way to the bus with his firearms on hand. That was the first experience that I've had at Livonia, the first racial experience that I've had at Livonia. My mother does not want me to come out here anymore because she feels unsafe, because race has not been an important part of you guys' law enforcement. It's always, we're always on the back burner. We're always being, like, hunted, it seems like, out here, because there's so many racial issues, and they're not being addressed. You guys have flew over everything that we have said, even the other people that have lived here. You guys have completely flew over it. You completely addressed another man that talked about protests. You completely addressed him with flying colors. But when I talk about my experience, when we talk about our experiences in your city, you do nothing. And why is that? Why is that? And I am asking with a kind heart, because I know you have heart to see the pain that we are going through. So why don't you address it? Why don't you release public, supposedly, public information to your citizens? And why do you withhold empathy for us? Because you did not say you had empathy for that other young lady. You did not say you had empathy for anyone with our cause. So that was what I wanted to say, in Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. M. And I hope that you will file a complaint with the police department following the, following the instance that you described, so, thank you. All right, we will move on to a listener who identifies as Black Lives Matter. We will ask you to give us your name, please. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Am I, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening. My name is Rye. My name is Rye. I am back. I am the vice president of the Black Student Union. I do not feel comfortable giving out my last name and everything, but I just wanted to say hello. I hope you guys are doing well. I really wanted to, number one, address the man that did speak earlier during the comments. I think his name was Mark. I wanted to say hello, and I wanted to apologize on behalf of all of the Black protesters and their allies. I'm really sorry that you can't sleep in the morning, but, you know, we just protested because Black people are too busy dying because they can't get any sleep. So I apologize if that really bothers you. I also wanted to say thank you to Kathleen for giving them an empathy, for complaining about noise and cars in the street while we've been talking to you for a couple of months now about you being so outspoken about the police department. The same police department that you just said you have no dealings with and cannot control what they do. So I just wanted to say, you know, thanks for having empathy for them and not for us. I also wanted to speak to Vice President Barr. I know that some of my colleagues did have a meeting with you, and I wasn't there to attend, but they did relay some of the things that you did say, and I just wanted to address them here. I heard you say that racism is a hard issue. I also heard that you say that diversity cannot be forced, you know, in any environments. I also heard you say that civil rights legislation was only changed because of a hard issue. I also, what else did you say? I also, I think you said that you, I don't remember what you said, but you know what? That's, those are the things I want to talk about anyway. First off, racism not only was a hard issue, that's where it started, you are not wrong, but it was legal to own slaves. It was also legal to segregate Black and white people. It was legal to rape, murder, kill, and do all of the things that people are doing now. It's also legal to shoot a Black man in his car while he's driving and then totally get away with it. And if you don't believe me, go look at Breonna Taylor. It was legal to do that, what she did. That's why they got arrested, because legally they could do that. So racism, yes, is a hard issue, but you need to tell me that it can't be fixed at the government level? That is ludicrous. And it's interesting to me that you said diversity can't be forced. I mean, it was forced when this country was built, when white people came over here from Europe and took it from Native Americans. So I'm confused as to why we can't force it right now. And it's been years. This city is known to be racist. It's been years. The only thing that you guys can say to me is that racism...
Thirty seconds left.
...can go away, and that diversity is a slow-changing thing. Well, why don't you speed the process up and be the first to pioneer change? Because y'all take it too long. Come on now, change it now. Thank you. Stop, stop getting excuses.
All right, we will go next to Alexandria. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, hello, my name is Alexandria.
Please give us your last name.
Hi, I'm Alexandria Hughes. I'm with Freedom Fighters, Michigan Liberation.
I'm sorry, you're with whom? I couldn't hear that. Freedom?
Freedom Fighters and Michigan Liberation.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, this statement is for Kathleen McIntyre. I saw that you and the police chief recently made comments on how you oppose having a police oversight committee. When you have a mayor that is okay with police officers only having a high school diploma, level of education, a police department that chooses not to be transparent...
I'm having a very hard time hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Much better. We'll reset your three minutes.
Hello?
Hello, reset your three minutes. Good evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I saw that you made comments with the police chief in an article recently regarding you opposing the oversight committee. When you have a mayor that is okay with police officers only having a high school level of education, a police department that chooses not to be transparent and release data on traffic stops to the public, and information from the Livonia PAC website that shows Black people received 44% of all written citations last year, but make up only 3% of the population, it's abundantly clear that an oversight committee is needed for the police. An oversight committee is not a foreign practice. Places like Muskegon, Michigan, have a police oversight committee with a diverse group of members, some of which are more educated and have a greater legal background than those on the police force currently. An oversight committee has the people's best interests. Actions of the city council president, police chief, mayor indicate that you do not have... Lastly, Mr. Barr, thank you for responding to my email. There was something you said that stood out to me. You said that me referring to specific inequalities such as police violence killing Black people and nearly three times the rate of white Americans was not an issue of law. If that isn't, then what is? The data released on the PAC website once again shows that 44% of those who receive citations are Black, although we're only 3% of the population. Wouldn't we be able to begin to solve the problem by having an oversight committee with subpoena power, access to body cameras? This is a necessary change that holds officers accountable. Isn't this an issue of law?
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
Crickets, as usual.
All right, with that, we will go on to, I see the last...
Madam President.
Yes.
I'm not going to respond to everything, but I do want to respond when I misquoted the quote that she just said. I actually had the email right in front of me. That is a gross misrepresentation of what I said in my email. So what I, what I was, and I'm not going to go into detail here, but as I've talked in these councils in the past, is differentiating things that are, actions that I think can be handled with law and ideologies that are, that are issues of the heart. There was that distinction that I was referring to. So just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Next, we will go on to the phone number that ends with 6168. And I'm getting on mute. There we go. Good evening.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. John Grisbeck, 11301 Hubbell. I can only speak for myself as a resident tonight. I've been around in the community long enough, though, to know that respectful dialogue is the best way to resolve division. I want to thank the administration and council, along with the Livonia PD and residents, for opening that dialogue. I believe much of the reports that the police department put out speaks for itself. Our police department is first class. However, all police departments need to evolve and continue to be supported with the correct training and things that we've always had in Livonia. I think Livonia needs to evolve its police department, not throw away what works. And again, I think respectful dialogue is the right way, and I do believe that we are generally on the right course. For those of you that don't know, and I know council knows this, as council is keenly aware of this, and many residents are as well, but being an involved resident, Livonia police goes over and beyond law enforcement. They provide support to our CERT program, Goodfellows, Shop With A Cop, Passport To Safety, School Liaison Officers, the Livonia Savor Youth Coalition, Livonia Spree, and many other programs. Those are programs that help residents and non-residents alike. And I just wanted to throw that out there, and we thank them for that. I also wanted to say, you know, two days from now, 9/11, the anniversary of 9/11 will occur. We all were united then, and I think, I know council's aware of this, and I know council, I can't speak for anybody on council or the mayor or anybody else, but it'd be sure nice if we could all come together again like that. I know there's some issues out there that are being discussed. The PD is one of them, but it's time that we come together. And I know a lot of our nation is divided, but I have confidence in the mayor, the administration, that a professional department has PD and the council and residents and non-residents to come together and, again, evolve through evolution and not throw away what we do right. um, and again, evolve, uh, through evolution and not throw away, um, what we do right. So thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Grisbeck. Uh, we have time for one more. We'll move along to Connie Dickey. I'm hitting the unmute. There we go. Good evening.
My name is Connie Dickey. I have been a resident of Livonia since nineteen sixty-one. Lived here a very long time. I live on Rayburn. I'm here to support what Mark Alles had said earlier, but also to add to Ms. Toy's, uh, comment. We have filed police complaints. We have had many talks with the police. Our major concern is our subdivision, Coventry State, has been here for a very long time, and we have lost it with all the protesting and the Planned Parenthood. And we need your help. We really need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dickey. And with that, we will close out the audience communication, and now we will move on with the rest of our agenda. Anyone who wants to address council, who do not have an opportunity to do so, may, uh, will have the opportunity to do so at the following conclusion of the rest of the meeting agenda. And now I need to find the rest of the meeting agenda. All right, we, um, at this time, we go to any reports from the mayors or other city officials, and I do not see that we have any of these things, so we will go ahead, go ahead with our consent agenda, which tonight encompasses items one through five. Those items are listed on the consent agenda. They're voted on as one item. It does not mean that they are any less important than any other items on the agenda, but that during our study meeting, they were deemed to be not controversial in nature. Counsel.
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Jolly.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Department.
Councilmember McCullough. And, um, Madam Clerk, would you please just take the vote on approval of the consent agenda, uh, consent agenda, which this evening is, um, items one through five?
Councilmember Toy.
Hi.
Vice President Barr.
Hi.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick.
Hi.
Councilmember Jolly.
Hi.
President McIntyre.
Hi, and the consent agenda passes unanimously. And now we'll go ahead with unfinished business, beginning with meetings of the committee. Item number six is the Finance and Budget Committee. Um, this is a, uh, a meeting, this meeting took place on Monday, August tenth, twenty twenty. Uh, I'm going to ask that the, uh, assessment data, the twenty twenty assessment data booklet that was, uh, that we received from the city assessor dated June first, twenty twenty, be received and placed on file for the information of the council. At this point, I'll turn this item over to Vice President Barr, who chairs the Finance and Budget Committee. Vice President Barr.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, yeah, we had a meeting of the Finance and Budget Committee on Monday, August tenth. Uh, the purpose of this meeting was to get a first, first look, an advanced budget review for the twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one budget. Um, this is also the opportunity for council to, um, weigh in with some suggestions of things for the administration to consider as they put together the final budget, which is due to be delivered to us by September fifteenth and will be reviewed in some future meetings. Uh, the meeting convened at seven o'clock PM. It was attended by the entire council, as well as Mayor Brosnan, City Attorney Paul Burnier, Director of Finance Mike Slater, City Treasurer Linda Shields, City Clerk Susan Nash, and Dave Varga from the mayor's office, and Judy Preby from the council office. Um, I'll just, I'll skim over, uh, I've, I've got a number, quite a few numbers in the minutes, um, but some of these things, um, I've shared before, um, although this time it has a little bit more, um, firmness to it because we, we now have the numbers to work with to put a budget together. So I'll just, I'll run through this really quick for the sake of our residents. Um, as far as anticipated budget for twenty-one fiscal year, uh, property tax revenue is up three point one percent. Um, state equalized value is up five percent and taxable value up three and a half percent. Um, that's a mixture of residential, commercial, and industrial values, all of which are up. Um, state shared revenue, uh, was down seven percent this year. It's been up three to five percent in many of the previous years, so that's a change. Um, but in spite of all of that, one of the things that, at least for a time, is, is positive news, but I'll, I'll clarify that in a minute, um, is our total general fund revenue is actually expected to be up by a percent next year. Now, residents may be saying, how in the world can that be with everything we're going through with COVID? Um, but it has to do with, I mean, there's a number of complex factors, but I'll simplify by saying this, that a good portion of the revenue that comes in the city is on property taxes. And, um, just by the nature of what that is, um, I think we're going to see a delayed effect on the revenue side for the city. So our, our general fund revenue is roughly equal. It's a little bit up going into next year, um, but we're going to have to be diligent because I, I think we all fully expect that that's not going to be the case in the, in the next couple of years, um, as we see the delayed effects of all the COVID shutdowns at the city. Um, also, just on the expense side, uh, we were just told that the administration is considering, again, none of this is final, but the administration is considering requests for eight new positions. Um, on the long-term liability side, they, we expect our, our VIBA, which is the healthcare, um, long-term liability, we expect the funding for that to be up seven hundred thousand, as far as what's required from us. Um, on the pension side, uh, but what we discussed in the meeting was, was, um, budgeting one point three million of that, of which point five million of that is for the existing defined benefit program, um, which is ninety-four percent funded. Um, and some of that is subject to, to negotiations and things, so, um, you know, that's, that's not final for sure. Um, on the COVID cost side, um, which has been a relevant topic this year, uh, we've spent about three hundred thousand dollars to date on PPE, Plexiglas Dividers, Work From Home Technology, Zoom Meetings, Testing, et cetera. Um, I think that's stabilizing at this point, but that's what the, the price tag has been for a lot of the emergency funding we've had to do just to operate around here. Um, just, again, just for the sake of brevity, I'm trying to see some things to skip through. Uh, as far as other items, the, the city has applied for grants exceeding five and a half million dollars. We don't expect to get all of that. We've been awarded a little more than a quarter million to date. Um, and, and there's some other things outstanding there that we're still seeing if we're going to get, some of which can be used to cover April, May expenses due to COVID. Uh, Parks and Rec is expecting a small loss of one hundred to three hundred thousand. Big part of that is, is the COVID, um, related costs, particularly with closing down the rec center. Um, the golf courses, however, the revenue is up year over year. So that's kind of just an overview of what we went through with the budget. Um, then we have, as I said earlier, we have an opportunity for the council to weigh in on things they'd like considered. Um, the first item on my list, uh, came from Councilman Jolly, and you heard this referenced in his proposal earlier for master plan for Greenmead. Um, and he asked in that meeting about, um, some, some plans related to Green, Greenmead and, and how those might be included in the budget. But due to some recent organizational changes, Greenmead has been moved over to Parks and Rec from, from what was Community Resources before. And, uh, just due to that, the administration mentioned they don't see any significant movement on that topic this year, but, but it was certainly noted. Um, Brandon McCullough had a couple of suggestions he shared. The one was about, uh, having an inspector devoted to maintenance code enforcement, um, which we then talked about how we've actually, we actually added that position a year ago, just hasn't been filled yet. Um, uh, Councilmember McCullough also asked about solar plant panels where they make sense and diversity inclusion training for employees. And then I had a couple of suggestions. I had asked about the Christmas parade and what that was looking like for this year. Um, and I also, uh, suggested that we look at maybe expanding that in some ways, including some food trucks. Um, as you can imagine, with the COVID situation that is, that is up in here, we all like to see it happen, but we're going to have to see how things develop. And then, um, finally, I just mentioned that I'd like to see us consider making a habit of setting aside money each year, uh, for major building projects. We're often talking about major building projects coming down, coming down the pike, um, in the future. And we actually, last year, set aside a portion of the budget for that, but, uh, I'd like to see us more systematically setting aside money for that. So that's an overview of what that meeting was. As I said, we'll have the, um, actual proposed budget from the mayor's office. It's due to us in six days, and then there will be public hearings on that, um, as we go through the approval process. Uh, and I just went from memory on that, and I just realized it's written down here. Uh, yeah, budget must be adopted by the council by November first. So the committee recommends to receive and place on file for the information of the council, the City Livonia Assessment Data Booklet from the City Assessor, which I think Councilman, Council President McIntyre already handled. Um, this item's a standing resolution that remained in committee. And then we also had one additional item that had been on the agenda for that committee for quite some time, I think more than a decade, and it was the subject of a five-year budget process for the city. And we did have some discussion about the, the merits, the pros and cons of that. We ultimately, uh, have a resolution on that to take note of. So, um, so that item will go out of committee and the meeting adjourned at eight sixteen PM. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Barr. Councilmember Toy.
Hey, Adam Chair. Um, are we still able to add to that list of suggestions in the budget for next year?
Yes.
Uh, we have a public, if I may, Madam President, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I mean, um, you know, we have a public forum right now, Councilwoman Toy, so I think if, uh, you express it now, it will be heard, um, by the public and by the mayor's office.
Well, I'm working on it. I'm working on it. So it's not finished yet, but yeah, I, it, it involves, it involves some dollars as it relates to the environmental, environmental kinds of things. Just as a study, uh, you know, uh, I'll, I'll have some dollars and I'll pass it along to Mr. Chair, if I may.
Well, you can, I, it's probably, you're free, free to pass it along to me. It's probably better directed directly to the mayor's office. Um, you know, they, they owe us a budget in six days. There's obviously an approval process that follows that. Um, until it's approved, I suppose anything can be considered, so.
Uh, I appreciate that. I did mention it to them. So, um, I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention as well, and I didn't want to, you know, make sure it wasn't too late. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, see, uh, see, none. Someone has a hand up. Um, Deana Hallis, i- if you're, i- if, if the people who have their hands up in the audience um, have a question related to the budget or a comment related to the city budget, please leave your hands up. If you have your hands up, not to talk about the budget, please take your hands down because you, you will not, this is not the time to speak on anything other than the budget. And again, as I stated at the end of the first audience communication, if you did not have an opportunity to address council during the first, uh, thirty-minute audience communication prior to the beginning of this part of the agenda, you'll, will go to audience communication again at the end of the meeting. You'll have an opportunity to address the council at that time. All right, uh, item number seven is a report out on the committee of the whole. We met on Wednesday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty, and this was regarding a request from Robert Trinkle and Elizabeth Pizzo, uh, who live at two nine five six eight McIntyre, and Gina Nugent, two nine five two five Robert, for proposed lot split in combination of the property located at the northwest corner of Robert and McIntyre Avenues, no relation to the city council president, two nine five six eight McIntyre, two nine five five one Robert, and two nine five two five Robert, to waive the lot depth and area for proposed parcel one, and this was petition two zero one nine dash zero nine dash LS dash eighteen. This is council resolution four oh two dash one nine. Um, we had the, and I'd also like to, um, respectfully suggest that a communication that was received from the Assessment Department, the date of July twentieth, twenty twenty, regarding the revised surveys on the subject properties for the proposed lot split with respect to this matter be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And, uh, before we, I'll do the report out, and before we, before we, um, vote on this, I'd just like to remind everyone that this does require a supermajority vote of no fewer than five council members.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
Don't move.
Well, first I was, thank, thank you. all right, um, do we have support?
I'll support that, Madam President. Thank you.
All right, um, the report out for this item, we had a, we had a brief discussion and just reviewed the, um, just reviewed the facts of the matter with the, uh, petitioners, and, um, there were no significant issues or concerns. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, so I'll, I'll just say, this is a, a situation that this gentleman had brought to us once earlier. Uh, what he was asking for at that time was, uh, uh, reviewed, but, uh, we also commented as a council in regards to something that we thought might be more appropriate. He went back and made those, uh, changes and, uh, brought it back to us. Uh, and ultimately, he's presented us with something that is acceptable and I think would make his situation better and also not unduly burden the other piece of property in this case, which he also happens to own. Um, but when we look at these things, we don't look at them only in the short term of the current owners, but in the long-term ownership and the pers- perspective value of the property going forward as well. I would just like to commend the gentleman, I believe his daughter was there, and, uh, all who are involved with us from City Hall. I think we found a good resolution with everybody contributing the way they did. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should also note that the committee members who were present were myself, Councilmember Jim Jolly, Council, I should say, Councilmembers Jim Jolly, Brandon McCullough, Laura Toy, Kathy White, um, Vice President Barr, and Rob Donavick. We're both absent. The other city officials present were Mayor Brosnan, our City Attorney Paul Burnier, our Planner Scott Miller, Elizabeth Pizzo, a petitioner, and Elizabeth, you know, one of the, one of the, um, petitioners. So if there are, um, if there are no further questions or comments from the audience, we could go ahead, please, Madam Clerk, and take the vote on the lot split.
Councilmember Toy.
Hi.
Vice President Barr.
Hi.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick.
Hi.
Councilmember Jolly.
Hi.
President McIntyre.
Hi, that was unanimous, so we met the supermajority threshold till the lot split and the waiver are approved. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, this is, uh, and this is under the unfinished business portion of the agenda. Number eight is a request for release of obligation termination of contract with Simple Recycling. And I would like to know, and I mentioned there was new data. It is respectfully suggested that email communication received from Sony Wilkins, Vice President Municipal Relations, Simple Recycling, dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty, requesting to rescind release of obligation request with respect to this item be received and placed on file for the info of the council. So they have rescinded their, they had asked us if we would, uh, change the contract and remove some of the, one of the obligations that they were under to, um, compensate us at a fairly minimal level, but compensate us for the volume of recycled materials that they pick up. They've now, after discussion at the, at the, at the last meeting, I guess it was the study meeting, um, following that, they submitted a letter asking to rescind their request to adjust the, the contract. So they would continue to, um, pay us one cent per pound for the collected materials. So, um, we are, they, I, uh, and Mr. Burnier, would you help me if I'm not correct here? I know we had some discussion on how to handle this. Do we need a resolution?
There was, there was a, uh, at the study meeting, there was a resolution put forward, uh, to terminate the, and then, and so far, I have not heard anybody make the motion today. Uh, so if nobody makes the motion, it would just fail because there's no motion or a second to terminate the contract, to call it a breach of the contract and terminate the contract.
And then we don't, I'm sorry, Paul.
So I think that's the first matter, was the resolution that was put forward by a council member to terminate the contract. That should be up, and unless there's a motion for that, or, and a second, it would just fail. And then we would be back to where we were in the first place, uh, before Simple Recycling decided to come and ask to have us rescind the contract.
And then we do not need to take any further, nothing, nothing then else needs to happen for us to take no further action, correct?
That's correct. It would fail by a lack of a motion and a second, and we would be, and the contract would stand.
Okay. Um, does any, Mr. Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the council committee of the whole so that we can continue to monitor, uh, the service provided by this vendor.
Discussion.
Uh, if I may, Madam President, I, I was the council member who offered the resolution to void out this contract, to cancel it. Um, I'm still not persuaded of the total value of this, but at this point, uh, as long as they are living up to their obligations going forward, I do not plan on bringing a motion to terminate the contract. Uh, but this is a situation where I think when people make contracts with us as the city of Livonia, I want to make sure that they're complying with the terms that they've agreed to. And if they don't comply with their terms, there's no reason why we should comply with ours. So for that reason, I'd like to keep it as an option to review in the committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Jolly, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President, I just, just, you know, as we kind of dug this matter up, I'll be in support, obviously, it's going to the committee of a hall, but, you know, after reviewing, I just, I think, I'm all for sustainability, I, I know the Green Leaf Commission does a great job with, you know, promoting different things in recycling, but just to make it known that, you know, this is a for-profit company, and some of these products get sold to some of these thrift stores, so, you know, while I do, you know, and people can have the choice to do it, you know, going forward, it would be wise to maybe just see if there were alternative measures out there that would, you know, be a hundred percent, you know, recycled raw product. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCullough, anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr?
Just want to remind everyone that even our trash service is a for-profit company, so I'm not really sure how that is relevant, but I'll support this going into committee, it's worthy to, to keep it there, but I, I do just want to say that I actually just used a service for the first time this past Friday, had two bags, as I mentioned last time, and been sitting in my basement, and of, of stuff that was old, torn-up clothes that it wouldn't, I could not in good conscience donate to one of the other charities to which most of our donated clothes go to, and I, I was curious to see how it worked, because to be honest with you, I haven't seen these trucks around, but they were there, right on schedule, picking up the bags, and it was, and, and replaced it with two new ones, it was, it was pretty easy, so, that was my first experience, and just wanted to remind our residents that that is available, those orange bags you have to, you put them out there on your trash day, and with, with textiles that you want recycled, and they'll be picked up, so, thank you.
Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we may want to remind residents where they can get these orange bags, if they're using them a lot, and what day or days are they picking up the soft goods that we're recycling at the moment?
Same day, same day as the regular.
Same day as their trash, correct?
Yeah, same day.
Okay, so where do they get the orange bags?
That's a good question, they were dropping them off.
Yeah.
Dropping them off, when they would pick up an orange bag, they would leave another orange bag, I don't know what the process is, but we can certainly get an answer for that.
Madam President? Madam President?
President Barr?
Yeah, you're exactly right, that's exactly what happened with me, is they left two new bags to replace the ones that they took.
And, and meanwhile, just a moment, we can ask the, I could ask the administration informally if they could get the information on the city website somewhere, how to get a bag, if you don't currently have a bag, and you threw out your old bags because you thought the service was gone.
That was good, that was going to be my question, if you don't have an orange bag, for one reason or the, maybe.
Excuse me, Councilmember Toy, I'm sorry, I was starting to recognize the clerk Nash.
You can receive bags at City Hall, we do have some available there, and I believe there was just something on the website talking about this recycling, the soft goods recycling.
Thank you, then I missed it.
It can be, can be, you can get them at City Hall.
Thank you, I'll find it on the website, I was too busy looking at the city council Facebook, school days Facebook pages, Councilmember Donovan?
Thank you, Madam President, I was just going to talk about the fact that I do think this is a good program for the residents, it's something that other communities may not be able to offer, but consistent with some of my colleagues, we have to make sure that we're getting the best deal, and that vendors that we are dealing with have to meet their obligation, so while they are a full-proper business, and they have to make sure that they can meet their bottom dollar, we have to make sure that the people that we deal with are following their contracts, I think it's a good idea going to committee of the whole, and I do think it's a good idea that we have services like this, and if that means eventually we have to go with a different vendor to supply this service to our residents, I understand in the future. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, I believe that Mr. Rushlow from the Department of Public Services has his hand up to speak, Mr. Rushlow?
Yes, hi, good evening, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, Jacob Rushlow, Superintendent of Public Service, so just thought I'd chime in real quick and answer the question you had all asked about how to get the orange bags, so clerk Nash is correct, they are available at City Hall, we also have a stash room at the D W Yard, or you can get them from us there, and if you don't want to make a trip out to either of those locations, you can go on the Simple Recycling website, and there's a link where you can request bags be delivered to you when they're out on route during your collection day and pickup day on your, same as your garbage pickup day, they will drop some bags off to you, you just have to enter in your address, and they will happily do that for you.
Got it, thank you very much, Mr. Rushlow.
You're welcome.
Anyone, did I see any one from council wish to speak on this? All right, so what we have on the floor is a resolution to put this item into committee, and it was supported by Councilmember Toy, and we've had some discussion, if no one else has anything to add, I would ask, Madam Clerk, if you would please take the vote on putting this into committee of the whole.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
No, and the resolution passes by a vote of six to one, and with that, we move on, I'm sorry, now I've lost my place, again in my notes, we move on still under unfinished business, item number nine, this is a request to approve, to approve a resolution to concur with industrial pretreatment program, it was the IPP, this comes as some of the Public Service Division as required by the Great Lakes Water Authority, G L W A, to regulate discharge of commercial and industrial wastewater, council.
Approving resolution, Madam President.
Support, support from Councilmember, we have any, any discussion on this? Anyone from the audience like to speak on this issue? All right, seeing no, Madam Clerk, if you would go ahead and take the vote on the resolution for incurring, for concurring with the IPP program.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the resolution is approved unanimously, with that, we move on to new business, item number ten, is a request to approve a settlement, this comes as from the law regarding Christopher Lee Murray Bay versus City of Livonia, it all, the, the U.S. District Court case number fourteen dash one three seven four three, council. Madam Chair? Yes, Councilmember White?
I was going to move to approve this settlement as recommended by the Law Department.
Support, support from Councilmember Toy, any discussion? Seeing no one from council or from the audience, we could go ahead, please, and take the vote on the resolution to approve this settlement.
Councilmember Toy?
Yes, aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the resolution carries, this time, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved, second.
Moved by Toy, seconded by Jolly, no discussion, go ahead, Madam Clerk, and if you would please take the vote to suspend the rules.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the rules are suspended, and with that, we move on to item X one, this is appointment of Michael Testa to the zoning board of appeals, this comes as from Councilmember Jim Jolly, to begin upon the resignation of Janice Centers in order to fill her unexpired term, which expires, which expires July twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and it's respectfully suggested that communication received from Councilmember Jim Jolly dated September third, twenty twenty, regarding the appointment of Michael A. Testa to the zoning board of appeals to fill Janice Centers' unexpired, unexpired term be received and placed on file for the information of the council, and we have new data that I, I mentioned I would refer to, the new data is an email communication received from Ms. Janice Centers dated September eighth, twenty twenty, requesting to resign from her appointed position on the Livonia zoning board of appeals with respect to this item be received and placed on file for the information of the council. All right, council, let me have a motion.
Moved to approve.
Support, support from Toy, any discussion?
Madam President, if I could introduce Mr. Testa, Mr. Testa is my nominee to be on the zoning board of appeals, I would not have normally asked for this to be an X item, but due to the timing and the scheduling of our meetings going forward, I thought it was appropriate to get him on the board as a replacement as soon as possible, Mr. Testa is a mechanical engineer for Toyota with approximately two pages of engineering experience here, that Mr. Barr probably understands that I do not, but I can tell you that from his experience as an engineer, I believe he has a great attention to detail and an ability to solve problems. By way of Livonia experience, which I think is very important in regards to having a community connection, Mr. Testa is currently the advocacy chair for the Livonia P T S A council at Hoover, he's on the advocacy committee for the Michigan P T A, he served as a special education task force member in the Livonia Public Schools Return to Learn Plan for twenty twenty, he's the vice president of capital improvements for Fairway Farms Swim Club, and he is the founder and administrator for the Livonia Closet, excuse me, Livonia Supply Closet for the Livonia Public Schools, which is an organization that brings together supplies and items that the teachers in the Livonia Public Schools can draw upon for projects they have in their classrooms and whatnot, I think his commitment to the community has been great, I've known him for a few years in regards to Livonia events and activities, and I very much appreciate your approval, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly, Councilmember Toy?
I, I just wanted to add that I think it's an excellent pick, this gentleman's background is unbelievable, and, you know, to come forward and want to serve is just remarkable with how busy he seems to be, but my gosh, what wonderful addition for the zoning board, thank you, Madam Chair.
I believe Mr. Testa is on the phone as well, or on the line, ma'am.
I believe that he is, I, Mr. McCullough, I had his hand up to speak, Mr. McCullough, Councilmember McCullough?
Thanks, Madam President, just a quick character reference on Mr. Testa, you know, he's on the Zoom call now, but I've had the pleasure of him over the past year, and I will echo everything that Mr. Jolly and, or, or, number Toy has echoed, but yeah, it's a great addition, I think this is a hands, a, a great slam dunk, Mr. Testa's on Z B A.
All right, would anyone else like to speak, I see that we have one hand up in the attendees, if you'd like to speak on the appointment of Mr. Testa to the zoning board of appeals, we will be happy calling you, if you're commenting on some other item not related to Mr. Testa's appointment, then please lower your hand, all right, we will, I will recognize Kelly. I'm trying to recognize Kelly. I'm hitting unmute.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Kelly?
Yes. My name is Kelly W., and I'm comfortable we're staying as W., but I just wanted to kind of go back to Mr. Barr, you know, I know.
Excuse me, are you, are you speaking on, yeah, okay, sure that's speaking on the appointment of Mr. Testa, I'd ask if someone is, wants to speak on the appointment of Mr. Testa, now's an opportunity to do so, there's another hand up, that I'm trying to unmute. Christine, I'm trying to unmute you, I'm, good evening, Christine, did you want to speak on the appointment of Mr. Testa to the zoning board of appeals?
No, I'm waiting for audience participation.
Okay, I'd ask that you lower your hand if you didn't want to speak on that item. All right, seeing no one else, I don't know, Mr. Jolly, if Mr. Testa wanted to say anything?
I, I believe he wanted to address the council very briefly.
All right, I think we now have Mr., I've hit unmute, good evening, Mr. Testa.
Good evening, thank you very much, thank you to Councilman Jolly for considering me for this appointment, and for the kind words from Councilman Toy, or Councilwoman Toy and Councilman McCullough, I think Jim summarized my experience very well, I also like to point out, I've been a twenty-year resident, or nearly twenty-year resident of Livonia, and I truly do understand the importance of this role, I'm confident my skills and experience will be a good fit and add value to this position, and I'm here to give you my commitment that I will prioritize this role, serve in respectful and fair manner, and be a good representative, thank you for your trust and confidence.
Thank you, Mr. Testa, I look forward to your service to the city, and I think if there's no one else to speak on this, we could go ahead, Madam Clerk, and if you would please take the vote on item X one, which is the appointment of Michael Testa to the zoning board of appeals to fill Janice Centers' unexpired term.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and Mr. Testa's appointment is approved unanimously, and was to take, it was to occur upon the resignation of Centers, and that has taken place, welcome, Mr. Testa. Before we go back to audience communication, I'd like to read, I could not find my, I could not find my specific notes, I, I had them, and they were, I put them inadvertently inside my stack paperwork, I just wanted to clarify what the, what the public hearings are, and read the, read the full information about them, I had mentioned them, but not read them out, we will be holding a public hearing on Monday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty via Zoom, this is regarding petition two zero two zero dash zero seven dash zero six dash zero one submitted by the city planning commission pursuant to council resolution one seventy dash twenty and section twenty-three point oh one A of the Livonia zoning ordinance number five forty-three is amended, proposing to amend articles, to amend sections two point one zero of article two, four point one two of article four, five point one five of article five, and sixteen point zero two of article sixteen to define caregiver, caregiver grow facility and regulate the zoning districts where medical marijuana facilities can operate, I believe that I mistakenly indicated this is coming to us from law, it's not, it's going to us from the planning commission, the other public hearing to be held on Monday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty, also to be held on Zoom, is petition two zero dash two zero dash zero seven dash zero one dash zero three submitted by Leo Suave Building Company pursuant to section twenty-three point oh one of the city of Livonia zoning ordinance number five forty-three, as amended, requesting to rezone the property at three seven eight five five Linden Avenue, this is the former Webster Elementary School site, located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Newburg and Hicks Road, in the southeast quarter of section nineteen, from P L Public Land to R O one family residential sixty by one hundred and twenty foot lots, and the public hearing that will be held on Wednesday, October seventh, twenty twenty, at seven P. M. via Zoom, is the proposed annual budget for the city of Livonia for the fiscal year ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and the public hearing is required by Act, Act Five, P A nineteen eighty-two, in connection, and that's public act nineteen eighty-two, with the truth and taxation hearing is adopted by the city council at the regular meeting held August seventeenth, twenty twenty, pursuant to council resolution two forty-four dash twenty, and I believe, Mr. Barr, you had something that you wanted to bring out before we go back to audience communication?
I did, thank you, Madam President, I, I should have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but failed to, I'd like to move that we refer the subject to the restructuring of the city council office to the Law Department for preparation of ordinance language.
Do we have?
And I can explain that further if I can get a second.
Support from, I'm sorry.
Councilman Donovan?
Donavick.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Just, just a little further explanation. As we've talked about previously here, and I know she, it looks like she's still on the call, Judy Prevy, who we all know and love, who was the Director of Legislative Affairs here in the Council Office for a long time. She recently retired, and we certainly miss her and all the ways that she served us so admirably. But with someone moving on, it's a natural opportunity to just assess the organizational structure of things. And there's, there's some things that we've been able to have some conversation, and I believe everybody on council, in one form or another, we've been able to talk about this a little bit. But just some opportunities to do some restructuring of the Council Office that I think is in the best interest, long-term, of the, of the city. And one of those things being, and I'll just mention this one thing, that the Director of Legislative Affairs, one thing that's always seemed odd to me since I've been on council is that that position essentially reports to council, but is hired by the mayor. And, you know, typically you would want the, a position that's to be hired by the same position that it's being, that it's reporting to. And so that's one of the things that I'd like, I'd like to change. And when we're talking about department heads like this and the organizational structures department, that's a matter of city ordinance. It's organized in Livonia, and that's something that's within the council purview. So we already had some discussion on this, but I just wanted to formally refer that to the Law Department to prepare that ordinance language that we can consider hopefully in our next meeting.
All right, and we had support from Mr. Donavick. Any, any discussion from council on this? All right, seeing none, and I, hands up in the audience. It indicated that they wanted to speak on audience communication on this item. If anyone in the audience would like to speak specifically on this item, I will ask them to raise their hands. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote on Mr. Barr's resolution? Again, I think formally it's a referral to the administration, and then it goes to law, I think. I have to figure out if that's how we should make these referrals. Go ahead, please, Madam Clerk, and take the vote. Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
President McIntyre? Aye, and the motion passes, and that will be referred to the administration for specific ordinance language. Thank you. At this time, we go back to audience communication. If the audience who did not have the opportunity to address council during the first, and we have several hands up, we'll begin with Retire McIntyre, which I assume is not your name, and if you could please share your name with us.
Good evening. This is Heather. I'm a Livonia homeowner. And first, I would like to ask if the council is able to disclose the amount of the settlement to Mr. Bay?
We passed that agenda item. Thank you.
No one can disclose the amount?
We passed that agenda item. That was a closed committee. Litigation is not, it's attorney-client privileged.
Okay. I want to refer back to a previous comment that credited the council and city administration for initiating a conversation about police reform. They did not initiate that conversation. Activists did. Here's one reason why we need civilian oversight of the Livonia Police. Recently, the mayor and chief Cade put out a document called "Livonia Police Did Not Wait", and it was in reference to the "Eight Can't Wait" campaign. And there were some factual inaccuracies in the document that Livonia Police and the mayor put out. They claimed that Livonia has banned chokeholds for 25 years under the use of force policy. But if you read the use of force policy, you see that it actually only bans chokeholds under, when collecting evidence. That is not a full ban. That is a ban on chokeholds when collecting evidence. This is a misrepresentation of the use of force policy. The Livonia Police Did Not Wait also claimed that there is a ban on shooting at moving vehicles, and a policy was quoted. However, there are exceptions to the policy of shooting at moving vehicles. So that is not a ban. And again, this is a false representation of what the use of force policy is. So if we cannot trust our mayor and our police chief to accurately represent what the use of force policies are within the police department, how can we trust them in other areas? This is why we need a civilian oversight commission. I have other questions, too. When will Livonia Police release traffic stop data? When will the council declare racism a public health crisis? Will the mayor and chief Cade address recent allegations of missing complaints against officers from 2019?
30 seconds left.
Also, I would just like to reference the city charter in which the council has powers of subpoena for other city departments. So I would like to request the council to obtain all of the relevant traffic stop and citation data for the last 10 years for Livonia Police, so that the public can be made aware. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we will go to say their name. And again, I will ask you to please, to please share your name with us.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for taking my call. My name, my real name is Deb C. I'm not going to give my last name. I, so I've tried to do these Zoom meetings before or jump on, and it's been difficult to get through. But here we are in the middle of COVID. So let me, let me say that I grew up here in Livonia, and I'm a graduate of Franklin High School in the 80s. So I'm aging myself. I moved out of the city for a couple of years, and when I married my husband, we purchased our first home here in Livonia. And we've been here for almost 30 years. We raised our own family here. I have two proud graduates of Central High School now. In addition to that, I'm also a Livonia business owner, where I practice as a clinical social worker here in Livonia. I have a pretty full caseload, and I'm very grateful for the work that I'm able to do with people. In this role, I often say that the first step toward any kind of resolution is acknowledgement of a problem, awareness. So your residents here in Livonia, including myself and everybody certainly that lives in my household, we are looking to you, our elected leaders, to recognize that Livonia has a problem with regard to race relations. This encompasses a variety of areas, race relations, from police traffic stops to student inclusion in school to frankly, representation in city leadership roles. I mean, I'm looking at a, I'm a cisgender white female, and I'm looking at all white people on the screen. These are just to name a few of the areas. So back to awareness. Awareness is the first step. You have to know that there's a problem to address the problem. And this is my first time speaking at the city council meeting, but I've been, I was at the protest, and, and I am, I am part of the Livonia, Livonia Citizens Care Group about Black Lives, and I'm, I know what's going on. So, and I'm getting the, I'm getting the sense that there's been some pushback from city leaders, that there is even a problem here in Livonia. Listen, I grew up in Livonia. I've lived here, again, in my adulthood for 30 years. Livonia has a problem.
30 seconds left.
And so I'm asking you, we are asking you, as our elected leaders, to please, please, please acknowledge that we have a problem. Acknowledge that we have a problem, so then we can solve it, and we can, we can resolve it and fix it. The city of Ferndale, the city council of Ferndale, had a declaration that they want to be an anti-racist city. I implore you to do the same thing for us here. Let's, let's be a city that people can admire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Now we go to Kelly. Good evening, Kelly.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would first like to go back and address, I know you guys did discuss a resolution at one point to declare racism a public health issue. I think it was two city council meetings ago. Mr. Barr, I know you had an issue with some of the language that Ally said, some nuances in her words, but you did push back and say that racism, you didn't want to use the word permeates because you don't think it permeates the whole city. You have said it's an issue of the heart. You know what? If that's true, that's fine. But we need you to then start writing resolutions from your heart. We need you to start declaring racism as an issue, as a public health issue. And Mr. McCullough, too. It looks like you are on two committees of note that could really be pushing some resolutions through. You lead the Law and Education Committee, and you are also a part of the Public Health and Environment Committee that Mrs. Toy leads. So these are the type of resolutions that you guys could really be bringing to the table to make some change. I mean, you guys speak that you have empathy for protesters, or you have empathy for this, but we're not seeing any pen-to-paper action. We're not seeing you backing the people on this call at all. And it's really embarrassing. It should, you guys should be embarrassed that people in other cities are telling their kids not to drive through this city because of racial profiling. And instead of doing something about it, you're sitting on your hands. That's an embarrassing thing, that other kids are saying that they can't drive through this city because they're afraid of the police here. So what are we hiding? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. We move on to Beth.
Good evening. Hi. Hello, thank you. My name is Beth Bailey, and I grew up in Livonia. And I wanted to speak to the fact that some city council members have questioned whether racism exists in Livonia. And growing up white in Livonia, it was hard for me to see the racism, too. I grew up in Old Rosedale subdivision, the subdivision with homes built in the 20s, 30s, and 40s. It's one of Livonia's subdivisions with racial covenants that forbade the sale of any homes to people of color, up until really the 50s. I lived one block away from Hubbard Street, the street named after noted segregationist and white supremacist Orville Hubbard, known for taking extreme actions to prevent black families from moving to white suburbs in Metro Detroit. I attended Franklin High School, the high school that was named after Benjamin Franklin, a man who owned enslaved people. When I attended Wayne State, I would drive down Jeffrey's Freeway, the highway that was named after the man whose highway construction campaign raised the once-thriving Black Bottom neighborhood, an enclave where black residents were actively building generational wealth for the first time in U.S. history, until its destruction robbed them of that opportunity. Growing up in Livonia meant that the spaces I occupied were monuments to racism. And when space is racialized in the way that it is in Metro Detroit, policing becomes a tool to maintain those racial lives. Livonia was designed to keep black folks out, with freeways set up to push black folks on through. And with the major disparities coming out between Livonia's population, black population, and the citation data, that suggests that police are responding to a mandate to patrol the few spaces in the city that black folks occupy. When space is racialized, where police are called to patrol is just as important as who they are called to patrol. Racism in Livonia's police force is not an issue of a few officers expressing racial bias. Racism in Livonia's police force is an issue of police following racist mandate. And it's time that Livonia's elected officials and representatives enact a new mandate, one where Livonia begins to reckon with its racist past, heals its racist present, and moves forward into an anti-racist future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we move on to James Schwab.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank, thank you for the recognition. I'd like to publicly offer an alternative to an oversight committee. I'd like to, like to recommend maybe opening up a, an accountability roster that you can see publicly on livonia.gov. And anybody that has an issue with a police officer, they can put it up on the roster, and it can be investigated. So I just wanted to publicly offer that up as opposed to a oversight committee.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you for your call, and thank you for your suggestion. All right, next, we move along to Nancy. Good evening, Nancy.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Nancy Darga. I am the former mayor pro temp in the city of Norville. And I wanted to introduce myself to you tonight because I am running for Wayne County Commissioner in District 9, which includes Livonia. Some of you know me already, and some of you may recognize me from attending Livonia City Council meetings last year with Commissioner Diane Webb and Glenn Anderson. What I wanted to tell you is as the former chief of design for Wayne County, I personally learned that the county, the services that the county provide actually touches almost every area of our lives, from health, law and order, transportation, environment, waste management, and of course, our precious and naturally significant park system. I am running for the county because I have a vision for revitalizing Wayne County that includes strengthening the Health and Safety Department, rebuilding our aging infrastructure, protecting our parks from being sold off to private developers, and reenergizing our economy. I know I'm not a familiar face to everyone in Livonia. I've been a member of the YMCA for 30 years. I have a family that lived in and grew in Livonia. And I know with your support that I can instigate policies and leverage funding that will build a safer, healthier, and prosperous community, which we really all want here in our hometown. So I have a website called votenancydarga.com. I invite you to check it out in my Facebook. I'm very open to questions. I have a very long history of working with nonprofits and on regional projects in all of Southeast Michigan. So thank you once again. We are all struggling with this pandemic and other issues that are affecting our daily lives.
Thank you, Ms. Darga, for taking the time to speak to us this evening. Thank you very much. Next, we go to Sarah O. Sarah?
Good evening, council members. I would just like to speak.
Could you please share your name with, your full name?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's, I'm Sarah Overwater. Live in Livonia, about seven mile in Farmington area. So I'd like to just go back to the, talk about the police oversight board. I have had some very nice email exchanges with council members. That's not sarcasm. It's been respectful, and it's been a good back and forth. But I just wanted to bring up a couple of points, again, in the research that we've had about police oversight and citizen oversight boards. So, once again, Hillary shared this quote earlier, but I think it's really important, and I would love to share it again. It's from Michigan State Police Colonel Joe Gasper. "If we find we can improve upon our practices to ensure fair and equitable treatment for all people, you have my commitment that we will make the necessary changes." And I just really think that's a very strong statement and a great sentiment. We all want to support police that we can really support. And the police that we can really support are the ones that are working hard to be the best modern police force that they can be. And an oversight board would help us to achieve that. Recently, I have read through sections of the Livonia City Charter. And while it's incredibly outdated, many things have been changed through ordinances, and the language is really not up to date as well. I learned that the city council has the power to create board- I learned that the City Council has the power to create boards. And that makes me wonder if you have the power to create the Citizen Oversight Board. We know that neighboring communities like Detroit and Ann Arbor have these oversight commissions. We know that independent research and sites like Campaign Zero have shown that police oversight helps with the safety of all members of the community. This is something that has been around for a very long time, oversight boards in general. Livonia, once again, has this opportunity to be a leader and show that we have a terrible racist past, but we are now able to commit to becoming a more progressive city, a city where we have safety in policing and we have very high standards. And I hope that the City Council considers their role in police oversight and the creation of boards. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Overwater. John Hillers, good evening, Mr. Hillers.
Good evening. I would like to discuss tonight the Oversight Board as, as we've been discussing. I know that the council's deafening silence on top of their very minor times that you have responded hostility at holding the Livonia Police Department accountable is, is not really shocking, but it is frustrating. And I know that the council has mentioned, a few members of the council have mentioned issues of Livonia in the past that are now in the past. So I thought I would bring to your attention some of the issues with LPD that are currently going on. LPD did release the PAC site. However, they have not addressed the missing police complaints from their site. LPD also, officers are posting on social media praise for Kyle Rittenhouse, saying they wish there was millions more like him who will go and shoot protesters in the head. LP officers have pulled over women specifically to harass them for dates repeatedly. All of this has happened under Chief Cade, nothing has been done about it. This has also been happening under Mayor Bronson, nothing has been done about it. And it's happening under the City Council, and nothing is being done about it. It's time for a Citizens Oversight Board because the elected leaders in order to oversee the Police Department clearly are not doing their job. The Charter says that you do have the power and authority, now use it. I know some of you have tried to quietly maybe help in the, in, sorry, in the background, but now's not the time for that. Now we need people to stand up. Because when LPD, when we find out that an LPD officer won't take no from an answer when he pulls a woman over for a date and forces himself on her, that's on you. When LPD decides to harass good employees and they have to quit their jobs and businesses, lose out on money because they can't find good employees that are willing to drive to this city, that's on you. When LPD decides to beat up a black man, that's on you.
Thank you, Mr. Hillers.
Madam President.
Councilmember Donovan.
I apologize for interrupting. For our parliamentarian, is there anything during the audience communication that stops audience, members of the audience from portraying derogatory pictures? For instance, the picture that was just on here was, I believe, a Nazi symbol. So I don't know if we can look into that in the future, but I do believe that was a Nazi symbol, and I do believe that was offensive to any members of council or any attendees that may be watching. So I'd just like to make note of that, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. We will, we will look into that, thank you. I don't know if anyone else in council would like to comment on that. All right, seeing none, we'll go back to audience communication with Peter Chris Dale Hatch. Good evening.
Evening. My name is Peter Dale. I've lived in 9812 Cranston for the last 35 years. I have a confession to make. I am a racist. I'm an elder at the Detroit Quaker meeting, which meets in Detroit, has ties to the 19th century Underground Railroad, the abolition movement, and has an integrated membership, but I'm a racist. I volunteered for more than eight years at many agencies in Detroit, but I am a racist. I sent my daughter to a school in Detroit partly to make sure she would come to understand the social dynamics of our society, but I'm a racist. Our son is married to a woman of color, but I'm a racist. I could go on and on. So given this litany, how is it that I'm a racist? I'm a racist because I am the beneficiary of white privilege and have done nearly enough to get rid of the systemic racism that characterizes our culture. It's my moral duty as a virtuous member of our democratic society and as a practicing Christian to do everything in my power to remedy injustice. For example, I did not do nearly enough to support regional busing in Livonia in order to make sure poor people have access to our city. Even though I have to remind my friends to be super careful and to be perfect when driving to my house, I have done nothing. Really, they haven't needed reminding because Livonia has a widespread and deservedly awful reputation. Being nice, being Christian, knowing black people, having people of color in our families does not automatically give me or any white person the right to judge ourselves as not being racist. Your city representatives are supposed to be leaders. None of you have shown true leadership in matters of race. Where were you when there were 2,000 people peacefully demonstrating and marching around City Hall saying black lives matter and trying to start a dialogue? Where were you at the end of the march when public figures were allowed to speak? You were cowards and stayed away. If Mayor Brosnan, Chief Cade, or any of you had spoken, had made a heartfelt attempt to communicate with Livonia's citizens and had shown some concern for how Livonia is perceived beyond the city line, perhaps you wouldn't have been made to wring your hands over the billboard on Telegram. Your inaction made something like that billboard inevitable. Congratulations, by the way, for putting up your own billboard and telling the people of Michigan about Fortress Livonia, that fence around most of the police station. With that fence, the police are saying, we are not part of the city. We are not of you. We are forced unto ourselves, and we are afraid of you. I am fed up with the public arrogance and self-serving claims of a religious, moral, or civic virtue within this body when you have not shown any real leadership when it comes to racial issues. You have also not, you do not exercise the powers that's given to you by the City Charter and Act Five, Section 11, to direct Chief Cade to make substantive positive statements in department procedures or face disciplinary action. So step up and accept the responsibility that comes with being elected to leadership roles and stop acting like bureaucrats. The world is changing around you, and your political futures, not to mention your legacies, are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we move on to Christine.
Good evening. Not to make light of the previous.
Could you share your name with us, please?
Christine Peterson. I live at 33621 Rayburn.
Thank you.
You've heard the term Rayburn this evening. I don't want to negate the previous speakers, so, but I do want to go back to Mr. Hallis, Mr. Mark Hallis, who also lives on Rayburn. We were discussing the situation at Planned Parenthood. Mr. Hallis and Mrs. Dickey both live in very close proximity to the Planned Parenthood facility. I live down the street, so I'm not as impacted as they are. But I have my own issues with the situation up there. So this November, two years ago, the Planned Parenthood, which is a very nice facility, opened and was a real improvement for that corner. Well, then the protesters came along, and at first, yeah, there were a lot of them. And we did object to them. We went to the, to the city, we went to the, the police, and we asked them about how many signs were allowed. And they said one, you know, one sign placed in the ground. Well, then the protesters circumvented that. And so then they would just carry their signs, even though they were huge, or just set them on the ground, not stick them in. So apparently, that's how they got around the situation. I really, really object to these huge signs that show very graphic depictions of unborn babies. And it's very, it's very unsettling, and I don't even know how people that drive by there really feel about it, but I can't imagine that it's pleasant for anybody. Also, I suggest, or I, I support Mr. Hallis. The traffic situation has been bad from the get-go. At first, they were parking on both sides of the street, so you couldn't get through. Now they're just parking on the north side of the street, but they're getting closer and closer to encroaching on the corner, where if you tried to turn out off Rayburn onto Farmington, you would have a difficult time making a left turn and even turning in. So I, I just wanted to bring this up, and I want someone to, to say, you know, we've been to the Police Department, they've come out, but nothing is ever done. And I want to know about the sign ordinance as to whether there is a sign ordinance that would prohibit the number of signs and the number of protesters that are up there standing close to Farmington Road with their signs that are probably, I don't know, and then the one day the, the tent was up there also. So I, I just, I really feel, I've lived in Livonia since, on Rayburn since 1974, and I've never been upset. I love Coventry Gardens, it's been a very wonderful place. But I think you all know that, you've all been visiting here for our chili cook-off. So to see our neighborhood, you know, be put in this circumstance is very upsetting. And I really would appreciate someone giving me some direction as to what we need to do to go forward.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. I know that the administration, Mr. Bernier from the Law Department is with us tonight and represents for the administration. I know the administration is, and council's aware of the problem, very concerned. And we are also in communication with the administration about sign ordinances and what can be done to, to improve the situation, improve life for the residents of Coventry Garden. So thank you for your call. All right, so next we move on to Anna Kruegel.
Hello, so, um, as I know, we've been protesting at every single council meeting. Today, we were outside of the Livonia Police Department, and I just kind of wanted to share what happened today. So we got, of course, we got angry honks, we got flipped off. But most specifically, we had a man drive past us several times, and then he decided to come and park and stay. And he was yelling and screaming some very awful things. He was not being respectful of our speakers trying to speak. And what's even worse is that he had two young children with him. With some, when some of the members of Black Student Union tried to go talk to him, because we are very into conversation and trying to actually talk to people, he told his children, I'm not exactly sure what, something along the lines of, you know, they're coming to hurt us. And there were two young children in the Livonia Police Department parking lot, screaming, kicking, crying, because they thought the protesters were going to attack them because their dad was screaming awful things at us. He was being sexually, being sexual towards some of the girls there. And he had the audacity to do this at the Police Department because he knew nothing would happen to him. And I think, honestly, this is not a, like a one-in-a-million, you know, kind of guy that just happened to come along. I think this is the attitude in Livonia that a lot of people have because he had the boldness to come and do that as we were peacefully protesting, chanting, giving speeches. And I think a lot of people in Livonia honestly agree with him. Happening today, I see empathy given to people upset about noise of protesters, but where's the empathy been for us as we've coming, we have been coming to all of these meetings? We, we were emailing council members, Scott Barr met with us, which I really appreciate, but where's the empathy for us, or where's the working for us? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kruegel. And we go to Amanda Marie.
Hi, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Could you please give us your phone?
Hi, my name is Amanda Chrysler. I lived in Livonia my whole life growing up. I would just like to kind of address actually the full name comments. So I don't really think we legally have to give our entire full names. And I'm going to give you the reason why a lot of my friends and colleagues have chosen to abstain from giving their full names. And it is because of issues like the one Anna just spoke about. We have received multiple death threats. I know that you think our emails might be quite annoying, but when we are having our members doxxed for daring to speak about racism in Livonia and having us threatened, our billboard was threatened publicly on Twitter. Somebody said they were going to blow it up and then posted addresses of people who donated to the billboard or led the billboard. That is unacceptable, and that is coming from Livonia residents. So to say that it's a heart problem, it might be a heart problem, but you need to do better to stop these people from impacting people of color in your community that you do have a responsibility to. You have a responsibility to these people. Just because they don't look like you and they don't think the way you do, you should be enacting policies that keep them safe. And the full name and address issue is something that is putting people at risk just because they have the gall to come and speak to the council. I am still disappointed that we have not talked about declaring racism a public health crisis in this city. It's getting a bit old, to be honest with you. Westland has declared racism a public health crisis. The governor has done it, Farmington has done it. And at this point, it seems like heels are being dug into the sand on purpose just to protect the racism that does exist within the city. We've also been talking about a Police Oversight Commission of citizens. And just tonight, you guys approved a settlement for a police officer violating a black man's Fourth Amendment rights because he had the audacity to drive through Livonia while he was black. That is unacceptable that that ever happened. And to add on to it, that officer works for Livonia still and has gotten a promotion while they are being sued for racial discrimination. And that is just very reflective of how the City Council and the city administration feel about racism in this city. They don't seem to care. They seem to think it's something you can just settle away and forget about, but this is not something we are going to forget about. We are concerned about the lives of our black brothers and sisters that live and work and ride through Livonia. And tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time is up. I, I would just like to address one of the things that, that you said, and that is death threats. First of all, council has no way of knowing about that. If you're receiving death threats or threats of violence, those should be reported to the Police Department, so.
They were.
Okay?
Nothing was done.
All right, thank you. And with that, we come to the close of audience communication. And we have one other person that would like to speak. Good evening. Would you like to give us your name? And also, I will say that, that Ms. Chrysler seemed to accuse me of not allowing people to speak if they didn't give their full names. If people were paying attention, they would have realized that I allow people to speak with the first name and last initial and not record anyone who does not wish to be given up the press to do so. So that's not a founded accusation. Yes, good evening, sir.
Yes, my name is Wat Tyler. And I just wanted to respond to several times throughout this meeting, council members referred speakers to forward their complaints many times about police behavior to the police. And I just wanted to point out that that is missing the entire point. The whole reason this started is because people don't trust the police to investigate themselves and to hold themselves accountable. That's the very point of proposing an oversight committee. And it's not just the police themselves, but their buddies, in many cases, unfortunately, white supremacists. Now, as another point, I'd like to commend the gentleman earlier who, who took the very bold stance of admitting that he is a racist as a result of the benefits he's received due to the racial caste system of this country. Because the only way for you to improve yourself, much like an alcoholic or a drug addict, is to admit that you have a problem. And as long as you are trying to improve yourself, that's what matters. And it's the same thing for this city. And as a last point, at a recent meeting, Mr. Barr, you referenced the Word of Christ in order to maintain civility, the words of love thy- in order to maintain civility, the words of "love thy neighbor." And while I appreciate that sentiment, there is greater context in the scripture, because Jesus also said, "Think not, I have come with the gift of peace; I have come with the sword; I have come to turn man against his father and daughter against mother. Your enemies will be in your own house." Jesus was a revolutionary, he was a disruptor, he stood up against empire, and he stood with the outcasts. And on that point, Martin Luther King cautioned white Americans against establishing what he called "a negative peace," which is the mere absence of tension, as opposed to a positive peace, which is the establishment of justice. And Mr. Barr, it's in the public domain, I would suggest that you take the time to read a letter from a Birmingham jail.
Anything else?
Black Lives Matter, good night.
All right, and with that, we come to the end of audience communication. Would anyone like to offer a motion to adjourn?
Four, second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote on motion to adjourn?
Councilmember Toy. Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Yes.
Councilmember Donovanick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
At seven, we are adjourned. As of 9:12, we will reconvene at 8:25 for the beginning of the study meeting. Thank you, and I'll remind everyone who's on the call to.